There she is. Okay. Okay. I think the board is all here. Except for Scott. You know, we'll give him a couple of minutes. There he is. Okay, we're all here now, so we can start the meeting. Welcome to the February 23rd, 2021, a meeting of Town Evicting Planning Board. We'll start it as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, and under these circumstances, we could be sitting. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have meeting minutes from February 9th, 2021. Everybody had a chance to look over?
Yep.
We have a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Joe Logan moves.
Yes.
Second. Al Delina seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Any correspondence that we haven't already gone over in the last meeting? Chris, who is here? Oh, Lisa?
Nope, we didn't get any.
Okay, thank you. Dave, what is the town board doing these days?
Well, we had a meeting last night, and things are still moving along nicely, I would say, and, and not really a lot of news to report. And we're still in that pause period, and I think we're looking at some rec things opening up the summer a little bit with some of the series on the park and the music stuff and some of the other things that we're working on. Some of that Brian Umbelson's working on that. And I think the other thing has just been maintaining the parks and the trails have been getting a lot of work with the cross-country skiing and, and snow shoeing and all of that, so the, the snow's picked up in this area for a little bit, but other than that, nothing major.
Okay, well, thank you.
Dave, I had a question. I had a question a couple of days ago about, is there a roundabout going in on the Victory Egypt Road at Lane Road in line off? You know anything about that?
There is currently not a roundabout scheduled for that. We have asked, of course, that's a county road, County Road 9, right? I think three different, the county road, so we, we have asked for that, and they've done a study, and it, at this point, it doesn't warrant that. And of course, the issue is, if folks were coming through the underpass at 55, there's plenty of site distance there, but we know they don't go 55 when they're cruising through that underpass heading into town. So when they do the study, we've tried to get a classification, a warrant, a roundabout, and up to this point, we haven't been able to do that. So, you know, we'll try again in the future. I, I agree with you, Joe. I think it'd be a great spot for a roundabout. You know, I think those roads are getting increasingly busy, and I also think Ellis and Victory Egypt is becoming an increasing intersection as well. You know, as folks cut crosslots north of thruway heading over to Farmington, so I think that's getting busier as well, so, so stay tuned, but as of right now, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? Okay, then we will go to the agenda. The legal notice for the public hearing is a period of the Daily Messenger, along with under-review signs being posted on the subject parcels. Postcards are mailed to property owners within a minimum 500 feet from the location, where the initial public hearing date of each application or applications carried over, please refer to the planning and building office. Our first item is a public hearing, and I would remind everybody that speakers are requested to limit comments to three minutes and will be asked to conclude at five minutes. This is the At Minor subdivision. A public hearing is still open. Owner is the Trustee at Corruptible Survivors, Zone Residential 2, 1086 Strong Road, 0 MS 2020. We were waiting for a revised plan to be submitted in site business, and I think we got that. And then they received approval from the zoning board of appeals, February 1st, for accessory structure forward of the primary dome. Okay. Rocco, I think you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, we exhausted efforts along, along the highway. We did find a solution to come up with a suitable, safe site distance. Unfortunately involved maybe eliminating the driveway to the garage, and it's a little odd, but just north of there, there's a little high spot, and we got a really good site distance. It's a little cluttered. I sent you the plan showing a proposed driveway going that comes off about 70 feet south of Taylor Road, which is, you know, not, not the most desirable, but it's certainly a better spot than where the driveway is now. So if we were to share that driveway, I, I would think it's an acceptable solution in terms of accessing those two lots on the east side of the road. I originally did a, a sketch that Lisa's showing that showed the driveway extending far enough east to come around the backside of the garage, but the potential buyers for Lot 3 were, were kind of indicated to me that they were adamant about this one that we're showing right now. It's a little shorter, a little more congested, but I do think it works. So, that's kind of what we're hung up on now, and we're, we're hoping that this sheds some light on, on your concerns about the site distance, and I do agree with the board that this is a safer entry to the lot. So we would hope that you, we can move forward with this proposal that we presented tonight. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have some, three.
Yep.
And Suzie, if I could share my screen, please, or Lisa?
Yep, you should be able to.
Okay. So this is what I asked to look at. Have a straight-in shot with, from the road, back past the barn, and then I, I understand that the purchasers of Lot 3 wanted the driveway to the barn in the same spot, so you could tee off of that. But, to me, making this right-hand turn is difficult, if not impossible, for trucks to get around for accessing the houses that would be built on that parcel, and
I agree.
So it looks like the site distance is more than adequate where you've shown it at the driveway that you presented first off, but, or, you know, this morning, I guess that's the one that you brought in. But, it's, Wes and I had a discussion about it earlier this afternoon, and we both came to the conclusion, I think, that it would be certainly almost as good, if not as good, at this location and have a straight-in driveway shot, and then I show these two flares at the end, that would be where a driveway would peel off to Lot 2 and/or Lot 3. And it doesn't have to go there, but the nice thing about it is, if you show it in an aerial, it misses trees, and it gets by this one tree here, it looks like, and you can still have your gravel driveway access to the barn, so that's what I wanted to share. I hope that helps. And I don't know if your buyers would be amenable to this, but it misses the utility pole. You can see where my hand is here. And that's a good indicator where the lot line is if you're out there on the road. And this red line here is approximately the property line. I have it obviously placed perfectly on here, but I'm showing my intent, and it's basically to keep the driveway in one spot, right next to the property line, rather than showing like a landlocked piece of, you know, you haven't had a special easement through the lot, and you have this no man's land in between on Lot 2, so I think this makes a whole lot more sense. The site distance works, and I would imagine
Did you measure the site distance?
I did not, but we're talking about a 40-foot difference in the road. I know you mentioned there's a slight
Joe, there's a big difference in elevation between there. It really, it really makes a difference. We had to go that far north to achieve what we achieved.
All right, well, I, I did ask for a site distance at the lot line. I don't see it here, so I'm just curious why not, so.
Because it, because it didn't work.
So you went out there and you didn't find that there was any site distance there, or what is the site?
No, there's site distances, but if you go a little bit further north, like we did, it's, it's, it's a lot better. That's all I'm saying. It's a lot safer.
Okay, I'm just wondering what the site distance is.
I mean, I can go back and, I don't have a problem measuring it where you suggested, okay? I, I just, you know.
I don't know if anybody else on the board has a comment, or Wes, if you want to weigh in on this?
I can at least share some information with regard to the site distance measurements that are shown on Rocco's plan. And I guess one of the questions I was going to ask Rocco is, were the site distances that you've provided there, the 536 in one direction, 700 feet in the other direction, were those from a survey or were those field verified?
No, they were from a field, a field survey where we went out, we put the box on the ground and, you know, did that whole, you know.
Okay.
All right, we, we did it by astral reg, you know.
Okay, understood. I did have an opportunity to speak with Wade Daley of our office. I didn't speak to Lorenzo, but I did speak to with Wade. So he took a look at the site distances, and initially, we were questioning the 536 site distance, but we were able to resolve that. I actually, I also went out, did a, did a little site visit, and those appear to be reasonable site distances for the, for the driveway. I don't see that, you know, we, we didn't find that they were, that would prevent, you know, the planning board from, you know, going forward with a potential approval or action. They seem like reasonable site distances to us, so that's what I have to offer on, on the site distance. With regard to Joe's, Joe's sketch, the configuration of the driveway seemed, I like the way Joe's sketch works. I, you know, but I don't know the site distances, what, which Rocco brought up, and it might be worth, you know, before the planning board were to approve the configuration kind of depicted by Joe, we'd probably want to know what those site distances were. Just to, just to confirm that it would be workable, and but like, it might be difficult to, to get anything better in terms of site distances compared to what is on Rocco's plan. Just because of the topography and the change in the elevations of the roadway, so.
So, so, so you know, when you, when you drive by a piece of property or you drive onto a piece of property and you got a shared driveway, whether it's along the property line or whether it's, you know, 40 feet north of the property line, I, I just don't think you really can, that's of value, or, or there's any consequence there? I, I think what's more important is that, because of what you're trying to do, you put the driveway in the safest possible place. You didn't put it where, oh, a sense that goes along property, and I don't mean anything derogatory by that to Joe or the board. I'm just saying that, let me put the driveway here because it's the safest possible place. I'm not going to move it 50 feet over. I mean, if we go back out there, if the board decides they want me to check that, fine. But I don't think it makes any difference in the end if it's here or 50 feet over, except what's the best site distance, and I can tell you right now, the site distance is considerably less when I pull it over to the property line, because that's why we moved it where we moved it. But, I mean, you know, less, less than 100 feet away where the existing driveway is, the site distance is 250 feet less. And just because you move something 50 feet, when you're talking site distances, that 50 feet is not, and it's, you know, a cumulative or a subtraction. That 50 feet is dynamic, and you have to measure it from each spot. That's my only, that's the point I'm trying to make, is site distances are relative to the point on the face of the earth as we're looking back up and down the road. And, and, and they can, they can change radically in, in, in 30 horizontal feet. So we chose to put it there only because we felt like it was the safest possible place for the driveway. And the fact that it's a little bit off the property line, I, I just don't know. It only looks cleaner because it's on a piece of paper. It doesn't, it's not any cleaner, to be honest with you. It's still a shared driveway. But that's my thought, and, and I don't like the one where we turn real quick. I think that's dangerous. I think it's convoluted. I, I think it puts headlights coming right back in against headlights at night time. I think the original sketch that I provided, it shows going beyond the barn and then turning in, and then using some landscape out in front of the garage. I think in the end it'd be real attractive, and I think it's better for the, you know, the driveway to be north of the barn. I think to get room in there for landscaping. Those are my thoughts for whatever it were.
Want to hear from the rest of the board?
I have a comment.
Yes, Scott?
Um, well, I, I think that Rocco has shown that there is a safe location where they can put a driveway. And I think that was the goal of what we're doing, because these folks will be coming back for a site plan, I presume, at some point in the future. And so in terms of qualifying the subdivision, it seems like it's been qualified that it can support a common driveway to serve two lots, and there is a safe location. And I think it's subject to refinement when it comes back for site plans, so I think the, I think the immediate goal has been satisfied. That's what I think.
Okay. Anybody else come question or comment?
Al?
Yeah, I would echo Scott's. I think again, the exercise was to identify, right, that there's a, a safe access point, which I think Rocco's demonstrated there is. Joe, I, I do agree, just from a aerial cosmetic view, it seems to make more sense to have kind of the straight-line effect, but I'm not hung up either way into Scott's point, right? It can always be refined at the, the point of, of site plan approval, so.
Joe, Lindbeck?
Yeah, I, I agree as well. He asked the applicant to come up with a driveway with, with the safest, the best sightlines, and, and he did that, and Camer, Al, and Scott, he can refine that when they come up with the subdivision plans, but I think where he accessed his strong road is a good spot. He did what we asked him to do, so let's, let's move on.
Okay, and Joe, I thank you for your hard work on this, but I have to agree with the other board members that I think that's a good spot for it.
So, what I, what I'm hearing Rocco say is, I mean, I agree with you regarding the site distances. If you move the driveway back to where you get the perfect site distance, like I just did, then you can just extend the barn driveway teeing in, and then make your way back for the houses without having that hard right turn. So that would change your easement, I guess, on the lot, and
Yeah, I like that idea, Joe. That's a good idea.
So, you know, like I said, I'm willing to work with you, obviously, and
Would the board, could, could, would the board be willing? I like what Joe shows there, okay? The reason I like that is, and, and he's given some thought to this, because the only time you'd make that hard right is when you're going to the barn. And if you were going on out to the house, you would follow the main, and that's fairly safe. That's not a big deal. So having said that, if the board could vote tonight that we use the spot where I have the driveway, and I could then just, you know, revise the easement, I hope that could be a condition, and I could just revise the easement to look like Joe's sketch here.
I'd be fine with that.
It's a win, more to consider.
I think that's a win.
It is.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't presume to know where you're putting the houses, but it seems like you'd be putting them further back from the front of the lot, so I showed it this way. And once it gets past the barn, you know, just put it in a reasonable spot to, to make a Y and go to different properties, and you're all set. So, I'm glad to work with that, you know.
Not a problem. One other thing that I'd like to explore. Lisa, could you move that around a little bit, the, the map? The, the map. I wanted to see what the acreage was for Lot 3. I, I'm not, I don't remember.
It's 8.5 acres, Rocco.
Okay. So, so what, what if I was to talk to the two lot owners, and they were agreed to let me shift the line to follow the center of the drive? Then it would, that would be exactly what you were suggesting.
Right, and, and I, yeah, that would be fine if they're amenable to that, and, you know, it makes a lot of sense for me, for maintenance to have.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to them about that tomorrow, because I think they both like that better.
Yeah, okay.
So, so if we could just have a vote from the board that we do revise this map to reflect that idea, that would be wonderful, so we can move on with this.
Okay, Suzie?
Yes, Ernie, we do have a comment. It is from Sarah Consano, 23 Rothberry Circle, buyer of Lot 3. She had a couple of questions, and they were answered by Scott Harder, but she wanted me to read them. They were, are these proposed driveways the be-all, end-all? As the buyer, are we able to work with this plan and then submit something different with a building site plan in the future? And her other one was, are driveways required to be approved with minor subdivisions? And those were answered, and then she just wanted me to read them, so they were in the record.
Okay, so she has her answers. Anybody else?
And no one else on YouTube?
What?
No one else on YouTube, sorry.
Thank you. Well, we have a draft resolution.
Should we close the public hearing? Should we close the public hearing, or do we keep it open?
No, well, we should close the public hearing, because it's just this subdivision. All the lot owners are going to have to go through the planning process again, but not for this purpose. So yes, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close it?
Back moves.
Okay.
Joe Logan moves, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is closed.
Hey, Ernie? So, to the, to the question about, is this the end-all, be-all to the driveway? I would suggest Rocco is going to be working with the purchasers to come up with a driveway alignment and easement that would resolve this, but the entrance location is what we're, I think, agreeing to and, and asking for.
Yep. So we're going to keep it where the real, the real, the best possible site distance is.
Right.
I'm going to talk to the two, I'm going to talk to the two landlords about shifting the property line so that the driveway is half on, you know, they share the driveway, but it's really half and half, and then it'll look more like your second sketch.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yep.
Okay. Has everyone seen the draft resolution? Yes, no?
I'm trying to find it. There you go.
All right. Ready, ready? This is a resolution on the At Minor subdivision, 1086 Strong Road, today's date, not today's date, January 26, 21. We should change that date, right, Lisa?
Yep, I'll change it.
Thanks. This application number 04 MS 2020. Whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are a lot of them. Let me see the ones that are relevant to read. What is the pursuant to section 27-JA of the town quota recreation fee for each lot, or in the event of a multiple dwelling, a recognition fee for each family unit in lieu of parkland, should be paid to the town before issuance of a building permit. And in the 13, although the town's official map depicts a future, quote, "future local road," close quote, that connects the Terminus or Taylor Road with the intersection of Lewis Hill Road and Pine Tree Drive, it is not the applicant's intent to develop the property in a fashion that warrants the designation of a future roadway to the subject property. The official map, map depiction is also intended to be an approximation of potential future connections and does not commit the town to construction of a future local road. The planning board notes that the property is in an area of the town that retains at the least density of all zoning districts, and there are steep slopes, parentheses, natural constraint constraints, as identified in Figure 9 of the Town's Access Management Plan, quotes, quote, that present challenges to making a connection to or through the subject property. The quote, "future local roadway," close quote, on the official map, is not within the town's priority analysis area as shown on Figure 14, Appendix B of the Access Management Plan. Whereas the Town Evicting Planning Board reviewed the enlisted action on January 26, 2021, that should be changed to today's date as well, Lisa?
Yep, I'll add that in also.
No, thanks. Resolve, and it's identified no significant impacts. Now therefore, it would be resolved with the project At Minor subdivision will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that a negative separation be prepared, and be approved and resolved at the application of Venetia and Associates Minor Subdivision entitled At Minor Subdivision, drawn by Venetia Land Surveyors and Civil Engineers, dated December 8, 2020, last revised February 10, 2021. Planning board application of the 0 MS 2020, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the Minor Subdivision Plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law, adopt November 25, 1996. Two, that before the planning board chairman signs the approved form originals, the development, developers should submit two copies of electronic files to the town. Copy shall be forwarded to the town engineer's office to confirm that the data on the electronic files are the same as the approved subdivision plans. Three, that section four standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor, in the design and construction standards be met. Four, that the comments in a letter dated December 29, 2020, from Lobella Associates be addressed. Five, that the comments from code enforcement officer dated January 8, 2021, be addressed. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to, that the Minor Subdivision comply with the Town Evicting Science Destruction Standards and Development, including section four. We will approve subdivision maps and heat and conservation easements. Lot consolidations and lot line adjustments shall be submitted in digital format, AutoCAD 2002 or latest version, effective January 1, 2004, per Town Board Resolution Number 193 of June 23, 2003. Three, the applicant shall be aware that this approval does not mean that lots 2 and 3 are approved building lots. Site plan approval will be required prior to lots becoming buildable lots and before a building permit can be issued. Four, future property owners for lots 2 and 3 will need to perform depole and percolation tests witnessed by the town engineer and submitted for review with the town prior to issuance of a building permit. Five, that any conditions in the resolution granting the area of the area stated February 9, 2021, be adhered to, and be it thoroughly resolved that the planning board secretary distributed the planning board's approval letter. And do you have any additions or any other comments on this resolution? Everybody who said? Somebody move it then?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks. Joe moves to approve. Two seconds?
Second.
Al, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We thank, we thank you very much.
Hey, Rocco.
Good night, good night. Good night, folks. So long.
Aye.
I will just note that originally there was the ultimate grace application was going to be on tonight, but it has been withdrawn by the applicant. Apparently, they could not reach an accommodation with the seller of the property. Nothing, nothing that we did. Now, there's another agenda, and I've got one that came with my packet, and it's different. So what is number three, Lisa?
Or two? It's, the next one is Angle Rock subdivision.
It's, the next one is Englebrook subdivision.
Alright, this is the Englebrook subdivision preliminary and final. Oh, three P S twenty twenty, zone residential two, seventy-nine eighty Main Street Fishers, tax map number five point zero zero dash one dash seventy-three point two two. Owner is Jeffrey Englebrook. Applicant is requesting to subdivide lot two of the Smith subdivision into two lots. The A R two B will comprise of two acres, and will be developed with a single-family home. The A R two A will consist of the remaining sixteen point five four eight acres. This will be the second and third step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The sketch plan was announced complete December fifteen, twenty twenty. And I see you're here, Mr. Englebrook, you want to?
Yep.
Say anything?
Um, no, what you read is accurate.
Okay, any questions from the board for Mr. Englebrook? Wes, any comments?
Uh, thanks, Ernie, we did issue a letter dated February twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and I believe Greg McMahon, McMahon LaRue has a copy of the letter. I chatted with Al LaRue earlier this afternoon about the septic system and perk tests that were conducted on the site. I don't necessarily think there are any showstoppers here. One of the questions that, that we had revolved around the method of, of the perk test and, and pre-soaking the holes and so forth. But I think, I think the design engineer has done a reasonable job in assembling their plans and their proposed septic system. And it looks like the septic includes a pump station, a private pump station, and I just wanted to, you know, ask Greg if, if he had any special, anything worth sharing in terms of the, the design of the septic, and ultimately, we, we recognize that it's the design engineer who's responsible for the design and, and whether or not the septic is gonna work long-term. But we've, we've provided some comments, I think they're in the process of addressing those comments, and I think as long as any resolution references our letter and conditions any approval upon satisfaction of the town engineer letter, I, I think we'd be happy with that.
Wes, this, Greg McMahon, McMahon LaRue. And I'd just like to know, we did receive the letter, we've gone through all the comments. And we don't take exception, we, we can't address all of those comments, either verbally or through plan changes. I know Wes did discuss perks with Al LaRue, I, I think we're very comfortable with what we did out there and with the design of our system. Based on the, we did put in a dosing pump system due to the, the elevation of the house and the elevation of the field, although it's, it's not a huge difference. It was necessary for us to provide that pump, and I think dosing to the system provides a more even distribution of the affluent and generally provides for better results with a septic system.
Greg, you know what, I forgot to ask a question. And it's about the fill, when was, so there was, there was some fill placed on, on that project parcel, how long has it been there? Just out of curiosity, has it been like nine months, or has it been through a freeze thaw cycle?
Uh, Jeff, I know, I guess my answer is, I know it's been through a freeze thaw. Jeff can probably speak better to when, what that filling operation has gone on over a period of time.
Okay.
Unfortunately, yes. Um, it was moved two years ago, the bulk of it. And then last summer, it was, it was adjusted up a little higher because of the settlement. So, it was in early May, when it dried out enough to move topsoil over there, that was fine-grained.
Alright, that helps, thanks.
Okay, anything from the board, having thought about this? And Lisa, this is a public hearing, oh, sorry, Joe Limbeck.
I'm looking at the Conservation Board comments and discussion. But this is a major subdivision, there's eighteen or so acres. And on this particular project, we're talking about a four dot two acres total of conservation easement, and there's a requirement to have fifty percent of the property in green space. There's also a discussion about metro resources easement versus site-specific. And I wonder if anybody on the applicant's side can talk about how we're going to manage that, I can't see anything in the the notes that suggest how we're going to accomplish that, other than going for the town board perhaps for discussion, so I'm not quite sure where we're at with it.
Greg, do you have anything you wanna add from Al?
Um, no, I, I think we have submitted all of the easement materials to the town, I know Al said you were having some discussion, but we we've prepared all the easement materials, and those have been submitted to the town.
We did receive the conservation easement today, Joe. It is a site-specific easement that will go back to the Conservation Board next week for them to review that language. And the term conservation easement that's currently on the, on the property, Jeff is going to appear before the town board to request that that term conservation easement be rescinded, he's paid the penalty already for that term conservation easement to be terminated, and then we'll move forward, before anything else, we'll move forward with the permanent conservation easement on the site. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but we did receive the language for the site-specific conservation easement today.
Given the, given the steep slopes and the some of the water on the site, are, are some of those being taken out of a natural resources type of easement, or? I guess maybe if you would send me the paperwork, Tim, I'd be interested to see it.
Sure, yep, I can forward it tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Suzie, anybody call in from the public?
No, there are no comments.
Thank you.
Ernie, I have a question.
Yes, Joe?
Joe, um, on the plan, it shows an existing pond modifications approved by the town of Victor. And construction is underway, and then in the back, it says proposed pond to be constructed at a later date. And it, that proposed pond is part of the northwest corner of this lot. How does that, you know, once the lot is developed, ought to be, how do they propose to build a pond not on that lot?
The, the pond that's in the back is, is very much of a nebulous thing. It would stay within the horse pasture area, which is all grass now. The plan at this point is to finish the one that we're working on for the third summer. And then at point is to dig a test area, probably in the middle of the horse pasture area, and just see how it holds water. The one that we have and we're working on is, is a really good spot for a pond, it's always fresh and it fills and stays nice, we're not so sure that that other area would, would work. So, the size of, of the pond is very much up in the area, and it'll kind of depend on how the area responds to holding water.
Okay, and what are you doing to the pond that's there, are you just cleaning it out, or?
The pond, the pond that's there, it's gonna be expanded a little more to the north. And that's really about it, we're, we're almost there, as far as size goes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, I'm just kinda curious about that, because it does now cross over, was that like a pond, future pond is a has been there for a while, that intent, and that now you've decided to subdivide, and it crosses over that location?
Um, yeah, basically. Yeah.
Okay.
Since Kyle's gonna be owning the property, he doesn't have a problem with the pond being on the back of his lot. And so, it's something that we don't, I mean, if it goes that far, I don't think there'll be a problem, but of course, after he owns the lot, I mean, they change his mind. I don't, but it, it won't.
Okay. Alright, thank you, that's all I got, Ernie.
Is the public hearing still open?
Yes, it is.
Okay, have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move, Ernie.
I'll second.
Joe, Logan seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just, just in case, Suzie, anything come in since?
No, there are no further comments.
Thank you. We have a resolution, have you all seen it, I don't know if you have, maybe you have? It was in there.
I just sent it through email. If you're ready for it.
Alright, well, I have it here. It's the Englebrook subdivision preliminary and final. Seventy-nine eighty Main Street Fishers, today's date, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Application number zero three P S twenty and zero two F S twenty-one. Whereas the planning board made the following findings effect. And there are twelve of them. Whereas the town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the enlisted action on February twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, and identifying no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Englebrook subdivision will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. And be it further resolved that the preliminary slash final subdivision application of Jeffrey Englebrook, major subdivision entitled Englebrook subdivision, drawn by McMahon LaRue Associates P C, sheets one through six, dated June twenty twenty, planning board application number zero zero three P S twenty twenty and zero two F S twenty twenty-one, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the preliminary slash final subdivision plans. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid, as per fee reimbursement local law, adopted in twenty-five, nineteen ninety-six. Two, that before the planning board chairman signs the approved film originals, the developer should submit two copies of electronic files to the town. Copies of electronic files shall be forwarded to the town engineer to confirm that the data on the electronic files is the same as the approved subdivision plans. Three, that section four, standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor of the design and constructions be met. Four, that the comments in a letter dated February twenty twenty-one from Lobella Associates be addressed. Five, that the comments in a letter dated February twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, code enforcement officer be addressed. Six, that comments in a letter dated February five, twenty twenty-one, from someone or manager be addressed. And should we add something about the conservation? Conservation easement?
Ernie, can we, can we vote on this, if we haven't got the conservation easements resolved by the town board? We don't know what the final lines were gonna be, or what types of easements they're gonna be, they're looking to change from most respective site-specific.
Well, we've been making conditional on the town board approving the easements.
Condition number four in the ongoing, it kind of addresses that.
I haven't seen it, sorry.
Okay. Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. One, that the major subdivision comply with the town of Victor design and construction standards, land development, including section four. Two, that approved subdivision maps, including conservation easements, lot consolidations and lot line adjustments shall be submitted in digital format, AutoCAD two thousand two, or latest version, effective January one, two thousand four, per town board resolution number one ninety-three, of June twenty-three, two thousand three. Three, that all conservation easements show placement of markers on final plans. Four, prior to construction commencement, the applicant shall offer and the town shall accept a permanent conservation easement over a portion of the Englebrook property, while simultaneously terminating the existing term conservation easement presently affecting the property. And as Kim said, he's already done that. The applicant agrees to be responsible for any termination fees, put due and owing in accordance with chapter sixteen of the Victor Town Code, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distributed planning board's approval letter. Do you have a motion? I see Al's waiting for his hand up. Al moves? Joe, with seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, five, zero. And the next one, is that the fairways, Lisa?
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yep, the fairway is phase three.
It's a final subdivision. So, this is, this is not, or is it a public hearing? It's not.
It is not. Public hearing was conducted when preliminary overall was granted a decade ago.
Okay, this is the fairways phase three. Championship Drive, tax magnum, tax map number six point two zero one three zero zero dot zero 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 three F S twenty twenty-one, zone residential one, owner Fairview Ponds LLC. Applicant is requesting approval for phase three of the fairways project, consisting of seventy-two units. The championship drive extending to Gillis Road, the project will also include a dedicated clue, a dedicated right turn lane on Gillis Road for the proposed entrance. Chris, you here to speak with that, of that, Chris Nadler?
That's correct, Ernie, Chris Nadler, general counsel for Mark Four Enterprises. I'm here with David Cox from Passeros Engineering, Brian Powers, the director of engineering for Mark Four, and Chris DiMarzo, president of Mark Four. We are here for final approval for phase three. As you know, preliminary overall approval was granted, you know, about ten years ago, along with seeker, along with public hearings. Since that time, Mark Four has constructed the legacy, phase one, phase two of this townhouse project, as well as Champion Hills Country Club, which all, all of the phases of this development have been wildly successful, I think are real assets to the town. And I think everybody can agree with that. We are here after many years of completing construction, putting a lot of thought into this. We've had multiple meetings with town staff, received a lot of feedback. David Cox, our engineer, has responded to all the town staff comments. We did have the opportunity to have a meeting with and site walk with the Conservation Board. And I think significantly, they said after their site walks, they had no comments or concerns with this project. After driving through the previous phases, completed townhomes, it was apparent that the applicant is well-equipped and well-versed to handle the slopes this project has. So, I mean, that's about as, as great a response you can get, as you can get from a Conservation Board. They, they recognized how well the previous phases of this project have turned out. And with that, I'll turn it over to David Cox and Brian Powers to present the project, and we can answer any questions, Jim. Thank you very much.
Yeah, David Cox here with Passero Associates. Chris did a great job, he stole some of my thunder there, but the fairways.
It's not the risk you're own, you let the lawyer go first.
Yeah, apparently, lesson learned. Um, as, as Chris mentioned, the, the fairways project has been very successful in, you know, all the towns that I'm working in right now, townhomes are a hot commodity, pretty much that all the towns, they, they can't get enough, they can't, they don't have enough stock of commodity of townhomes, so. And this project, if you drive out there and look at the townhomes that Mark Four put in, they are some really look, really nice-looking townhomes, it's a, it's a great project. I mean, the whole project as a whole has eighty percent green space, you know, with the, the golf course, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a really nice place to drive through, for sure. Um, so, phase three, it's the last puzzle piece to complete this entire project that was started over a decade ago. Um, it is the same exact road layout, the same number of buildings, the same number of units, the same utility layout. Um, so there's really, there's no changes to Seeker, so Seeker's still good. We are making a our connection to Gillis Road that will improve emergency services, giving two means of access uh for this project, so that is definitely a plus there. Uh, we're putting a dedicated right turn lane into the project um off of Gillis, which is obviously a great asset. Uh, we're also restriping the intersection of Gillis Road and High Street so that uh Gillis on High Street will have a dedicated right and left turn lane. Um, so that'll be uh an amenity to the entire area, to all the residents and everyone who travels there. So that is, that's a really good thing. Um, and as Chris mentioned, we we've received and responded to comments from the fire marshal highway code enforcement and Keith Maynard on Stormwater. Um, and there's there's no showstoppers there. We've we addressed everything, uh didn't have any concerns. And like uh like you said, that we met with the conservation board and and they were, they were good with it. So that's uh, that's where we're at right now. Brian, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Uh, no, David, I think you did a nice job. The only thing I would say is uh the continuation of the road from phase two into phase three will be a dedicated road as it was in phase two and phase one. And uh the utilities, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and the uh public water system will all be dedicated as well.
Any other from the uh board of questions here? See, Joe and I were on the board when this whole thing was approved, Joe Logan. Uh Al, were you in for the whole thing?
Oh, I was not when when this particular project was approved.
Okay. In any event, we've been through it many, many times, sidewalks and everything. So Joe Lindbeck had his hand up?
I I I like it overall. I am curious, I noticed in the uh uh some of the documentation, there was initially a uh curved island posed where it intersects with Gillis Road. And I've noticed that a further down Gillis Road, it's either Yale Court or Fox Run, has a curved island. And I'm curious what the objection is and why it was removed. I I I just don't understand the the discussion, I guess, about curved islands.
Yeah, so we we really wanted the curved island, and that's why we put it in originally. Uh, but one of the comments from the highway department was to remove the curved island. Um it was a concern about maintenance, snow plowing and things like that, so they specifically requested that we remove it.
Okay. Actually, I just didn't, I didn't get the rationale, so I appreciate that, thanks.
The highway department would wind up rebuilding it every single spring because they destroy it with the plows every single winter. It just, it just makes it so much easier for them.
Like they do like they do in my mailbox. Yeah, Joe Logan, are there?
Um, couple of questions about the plan. Uh, I know it really hasn't changed, but you're showing in the um, I'll call it an eyebrow, it doesn't look like it, but you've got a bunch of um bank or a bunch of guest parking, I I guess we'll call it. Um, but uh and that's grayed in, but all the other parking aside is not grayed in. Are you not intending to put those in? Or are you going to put those in?
No, all the all the parking it that's shown is uh is getting put in. Uh, just happened to not get shaded, but all that parking that is shown, guest parking is getting put in.
Okay, great. It's it's in the rest of the complex, that's why I asked.
Yes, yep.
Specifically, we've had a little pushback on that otherwise. So, and then the other question I had was, uh, and I forget which document I was looking at, but there was you guys are doing Gillis and um High Street intersection work?
Restriping, yes.
It looks like it doesn't appear to be enough turning room to restripe it for the three lanes that you've got there, the the right turn, left turn and inlet lane, because you're wiggling the white stripe closer to the corner. And there's a lot of um stone on the ditch that goes around that curve. So my question is, are you narrowing the shoulder through that turn to do this?
Yes, the um, the shoulder is getting reduced some, which is not out of character when you have a a right right and left turn lane at an intersection. Uh, the turn, the the shoulder's not as important as it is on a when you're traveling at thirty-five or forty-five miles an hour.
So this works and the highway department's okay with that, since it is, you know, obviously town road, so.
Um, Joe, if this, if it helps, so I've got, I retrieved a copy of the uh restriping plan last week. Um, I've got a copy of it into Wade Daley, our road engineer. And I'm waiting for comments from him on uh the restriping program for Gillis and High Street.
Just want to make sure they were not forcing trucks or things to drive uh over the edge of the paved shoulder that's there now, if it stripes pushes closer to that that edge, and it looks like it drops off pretty well, I'm just looking at Google.
Yeah, all it all it means, Joe, is we're gonna have two cars jumping out in front of traffic on High Street now instead of just one.
Okay, then.
And and right now, it is designed with a thirty-five foot radius for the paint, for the white line, which is pretty, pretty generous, so there shouldn't be uh any issues there.
Alright, so as long as Wes is happy or Wes Wes's review is good, then I'm fine with it. Thanks. All I got.
It's Al, just one question because the hard copy, I was looking at the the font is so small, I couldn't read it, but is there an an intended sidewalk as part of phase three and is there a sidewalk in phase two? I just, I couldn't tell from the drawing.
There is a sidewalk in both uh phase one and phase two. It starts from High High Street and is on one side of the road of Championship Drive, and that will be continued in phase three.
Alright, good. I'm pleased to hear that. It keeps people off the road, so I'm good.
Hey Scott, anything?
Yeah, um, I I was just looking at Al Benedict's um comments, specifically comments three and four, whereas comment three are references constructed sidewalk along the property boundary with Gillis Road. Is is that another sidewalk that's being constructed as well?
So when we looked at that, there is a quite a bit of elevation change on our property there, and it's really not conducive for a sidewalk uh to be put in. That I think a sidewalk, if were to be constructed, it would really need to be closer to the road along the right way where it's much flatter. And not in, there's part portions where our property is up eight to ten feet above the road. Um, which would be a little not ideal for having a sidewalk that that high above the road and then the bank.
So Al indicates then that final plans only indicate the presence of a sidewalk easement. And that the planning board shall determine whether a sidewalk is to be constructed by the applicant along Gillis Road. So is that what you're currently showing, a sidewalk easement with the possibility of constructing it a later date?
Yes, we were providing a sidewalk easement, yes.
And and I guess his item four that he has noted as well, where he indicates that there's a thirty-foot rear setback and a twenty-foot side setback. Uh, originally, and now it's been changed to fifteen and fifteen, do you have a reason why that's happened as he's described?
Yeah, so we are matching the exact setbacks that were approved as part of phase two. So we're connecting, phase three connects right to phase two, so we're maintaining those same exact setbacks that were approved as phase two.
Okay. Does the planning board have a have an opinion on the sidewalk on Gillis Road?
And I just have a question, David, is the easement to the town of Victor?
Yes.
So that's for future, if the town decided to put the sidewalk in, not the developer.
Yeah, that that is set aside if.
I just want the planning board to understand that. That's what the easement is for. It's not for the developer to be putting in sidewalk along Gillis. But at a future date for the town to go in and put the sidewalk in.
So I just have a question, uh just so that I understand and and it's clear in my mind what uh David was mentioning with regard to the sidewalk. So you mentioned about the chain, the elevation difference between maybe the roadway, the pavement and the roadway and your property. Um, and that you felt it might be more conducive to have the sidewalk closer to the road versus on your property or on the on the applicant's property.
Right.
And if that's the case, does the town need that sidewalk easement on your property? Or is it in fact a reasonable place to to have the sidewalk is within the easement that you're depicting now? Or I might not understand what was being described, so I'm just looking for clarification.
Is there any map you can put up, Lisa?
We certainly don't need need to provide the sidewalk easement. Uh, we were just providing it um in the event, you know, future down to give additional land to the town, you know, if they needed needed additional land for if they were, when they were putting sidewalks in.
Lisa, is there a map or drawing that we look at or show us what this is?
I'm not sure, but Suzie can pull up, I think, one of the first two.
The the grading plan does a a good job of kind of showing the elevation change.
I've got it. Does that help?
No.
Are you looking at the plan or am I showing the wrong screen?
That's what I was. What are you talking about?
Right in here, plus along the road, I guess.
Oh, there there it is, Joe. Now you came up. Yeah, you can just along the property line that you can see that there's a lot of existing contours and a really steep bank down to the road, especially in that southern corner. Um, it, yeah, it's just a a lot of elevation change, for sure. Yeah.
Now, you do have a sidewalk stub up to Gillis.
Yes.
And and it just ends there, but there is no other sidewalk along the entire length of Gillis.
Correct.
So it, to me, it doesn't make sense to build anything right now, but if there's a need for it in the future, I don't see there being a problem that the town would be coming along and doing that, but they've done everything they need to tie to the towns right away, I think. There's a view looking east on Gillis with the entrance somewhere like around here, I think.
Yeah, that's where the state police came, so.
Walking around a soybean field back whenever it was.
So for point of reference, the power lines are about the right-of-way limit. And you can see at the telephone pole in the background, Joe, that your mouse moving around. Look at the grade that's to the right of that telephone pole.
It's it's going up, up this hill, right?
Yep. And to your point, we don't, being there's no sidewalk on Gillis Road, we don't even know if someday a sidewalk would be built on our side of the road or the other side of the road. And maybe in this location, it should be on the other side of the road.
Now, I can pan around for those that are interested. Flatter there, there's different places along Gillis that it doesn't work, like this property to the west. Um, it's fairly good shoulder here, you you're using, gonna be using that for your right turn lane, I think. Um, to get onto the property. So and for reference, back to the plan, here's that shoulder pull-off right here, right?
Yep.
Always put a stairway there.
So back to you guys.
Is there any harm in getting or in having that easement? Just for future benefit, if need be?
I don't see any harm.
I mean, maybe that's the best course of action.
Sure.
That seems reasonable, Scott.
We use it, we use it, and if we don't, we don't.
We're happy to provide.
I've got a couple of questions.
Uh, Ernie, I've got a couple of comments. Uh, we have, we have yet to provide uh town engineer comments. Uh, we did have a set of comments uh prepared, and we got an updated set of plans which resolved some of our comments. Uh, we do have an updated SWIP as well. I noticed that there were several uh details on the detail sheet in the design plans, which didn't necessarily meet the town's design and construction standards, so uh they're probably gonna be uh need to, the town would probably need to provide some waivers, or the planning board might need to provide some waivers as part of an approval here. Uh, one of the things, one of the elements that I was looking at and have inquired a little bit with the town employees is the section width of the roadway, for example. Um, I'm guessing that the proposed dedicated roadway is being constructed in a fashion that is very similar, if not the same, to phases one and two.
Right.
Okay, so um the the current town's design and construction standards would generally require a twenty-two foot wide pavement section with two and a half foot gutters on each side of the roadway. Um, what the applicant is proposing here, so as to be consistent with previous phases, is that they're looking for a twenty-foot uh pavement width instead of twenty-two feet. Um, you know, so I did, I actually had, I had an opportunity to talk with Mark Years, the highway superintendent. Um, he contemplated this very uh scenario and whether or not to provide any comment on on the fact that they weren't meeting the the town's design standard in that regard. Um, he didn't, uh basically because he felt they were probably meeting what was previously constructed in this area. Um, he said that the wider roadway would provide him a little more room for his equipment in the wintertime. Um, he said he didn't really have a preference one way or the other. Uh, the other question I had was in regard to whether um the applicant would need to provide a roadway that met uh the standards of the International Fire Code um appendix D. Um, what is it called? The Fire Apparatus Access Road to meet a particular width, I think it's twenty twenty-six feet wide. Um, so I've got a question into uh Kim's office, and I think I just want to get clarification that everybody's on the same page with this potential waiver that the planning board would need to provide in that in that regard. So uh I'm looking into that issue, and then also the restriping uh element of Gillis Road, the intersection of Gillis and High Street. Um, so we've got a couple of comments that'll probably be forthcoming. I I don't see that they would necessarily be showstoppers at a future meeting, uh but we just want to be sure that uh the plans are buttoned up nice uh prior to uh taking act, prior to the planning board taking action. Any questions?
Is there actually a striping plan as part of these plans, or is that something different down by Gillis and um Victor Egypt or uh High Street?
There's a set, there's a plan sheet that David, I think David, it came from your office, right?
Yes.
Croc shows the restriping plan?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
I see Chris DiMarzo is on. Chris, do you have any comment or you wanna pipe in on this? Maybe he's not there.
Yeah, he may, he may have walked away, but I know he would want to thank you all for your your time in looking at this, and uh we appreciate it.
And that's what I would, what I would say about the road with, yes, you are correct. We want to continue with the road section as we have it in the prior phases. Because it would seem awkward since we're midstream of the road
Yeah.
to all of a sudden bow it out to another, you know, four feet wider. And reference the twenty-six foot with for fire code, we're actually twenty-five feet if you
Right.
include the um thirty-inch gutters on either side.
Yeah, the gut, the gutters do contribute towards that.
Yeah, the gut, the gutters do contribute towards that, so you're right. It, it, yeah, I, we see that point. Mark, Mark Years mentioned that very, that very point about having a potential, you know, you got a state a road that exists now, then all of a sudden just kind of bows out, right, just to accommodate the, the existing standards, so.
And thinking in terms of Mark Years and his group that plows these roads, how you would delineate that in the winter time?
Yeah. Understood. Yep.
Not very easily.
Well, and, and so one of the things that we want to do is just be sure that it's all documented, right? So, for any reason, it comes up in the, in the future, it's been documented in the planning board's resolution that, okay, you know, the planning board agrees, we're providing this waiver, you know, to be constructed as it was previously. And not in accordance with the standards that applied for the roadway section in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Sure. But I would, I would also say, Wes, that if there is some room to to, you know, can, I guess to continue to talk about this, we're gonna obviously work with your office and Mark Years on a resolution for the road. And whatever comes out of that resolution, the planning board, I think, is gonna abide by. I don't think they're gonna, they're gonna look to the experts to resolve that issue. And most of these planning board resolutions are created subject to addressing the Lavalas comments. That, quite frankly, I haven't heard anything, and it's a showstopper at this point.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'd like to move forward as, as fast as possible. The snow's already starting to melt, if, if anybody noticed. And we'd like to get some shovels in the ground. Um, so we, we have to accept that as a condition of approval tonight.
We do not have a resolution prepared for tonight. However, we'll put you on our next meeting, which is, what is it, Lisa, March?
March ninth.
March ninth.
Yep.
We'll have one ready, assuming all these issues that were raised are resolved.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Or, or if they're not resolved, we, we understand that they can be conditions of approval. Right.
That's true. Okay, then we're all set?
Yes, unless there's other, other discussion.
But? I said that.
I like Brian.
I think this is the last one on the agenda, right, Lisa?
Yep, it was your last one.
Have a good night, everybody.
I forgot, I forgot to ask you. I forgot to ask you to tell us what's on the next agenda.
I can do that now if you're ready.
Sure.
Okay, uh, March ninth, you have the Balone House demo on three seventy eight County Road nine. Uh, applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing house and shed. Tofstuka addition on eleven thirty five Willis Hill Road will be back. Public hearing is still open for the addition next to the cobblestone. Thirsty Turtle patio expansion at seven four twenty two State Route ninety six. Applicant is requesting approval to increase the size of the existing outdoor patio, including artificial turf and steel cable fencing. Victor Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, uh, seventy four eighty four State Route ninety six will be back for approval for their architectural renderings. And then a waiver from Design and Construction Standards for Lil's site plan at seven six thirty four State Route two fifty one. Requesting a waiver from the Design and Construction Standards for the vertical grade of a driveway not exceeding ten percent. And then any carryovers from tonight, so the fairways. That's it.
Okay. Then we are all set, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Joe, Logan makes the motion. Joe Lindbeck, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.